Recording in progress.
All right, welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Millbrae Planning Commission this October 21st, 2024. Can we do a roll call, please?
Commissioner Quigg. Vice Chair Davis. Chair Chan.
Present.
Three planning commissioners are present. Commissioners Wong and Choi are excused.
All right, if you're able, please stand to recite the pledge of allegiance. Next on the agenda is the land acknowledgement statement. The Millbrae, which I'll read in part. The Millbrae Planning Commission acknowledges that we occupy the unceded ancestral and traditional and contemporary homeland of the Ramaitush Aloni peoples, who are the original inhabitants of the San Francisco Peninsula. Visit ramaitush dot www.ramaitush.org to learn more about the Ramaitush Aloni people. Next on the agenda is the agenda review. Staff, do you have any short summary of what were, how many items there are or anything like that?
We have three items before the commission this evening, two design review residential projects and one parcel map recommendations to the council. And no changes to the agenda.
Great. Next on the agenda is the approval of the minutes of our meeting last week, October 14th, 2024. Any suggested revisions, fellow commissioners? Commissioner Quigg?
No, no, it's on the 29th. I have the revised. Yes.
All right, Commissioner Davis, do you have any?
No, with that change, I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, can we do a call to vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 3-0.
All right, next on the agenda is public communication. This is the place in the agenda, time in the agenda that we reserve for members of the public who wish to speak on items that are not on today's agenda, but are subject to the review of the Planning Commission. Staff, have you received any slips for public communication or are there hands raised on Zoom?
There are no hands raised on Zoom and there are no speaker slips.
All right. Moving on then, we'll move to the public hearing. Item 4A, 627 Santa Barbara Avenue. Public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a 656 square foot rear second story addition and a 966 square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two-story residence and a conditional use permit to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setback in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Good evening, Chair Chan, Jennifer Lynn, Assistant Planner with the City of Millbrae. And tonight I will be presenting the project at 627 Santa Barbara Avenue. This is a public hearing on a design review permit application to allow a 656 square foot rear second story addition and a 966 square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two-story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single-family residential R1 zone. This map shows the project's location. The project is located in the Cappuccino neighborhood. The project is located in the R1 single-family zone. It's an interior lot about 10,250 square feet. Existing two-story single-family residence is 2,129 square feet. And the project proposal is for the construction of a 656 square foot second story addition and a 966 square foot first floor addition into an existing two-story single-family residence. Here's the existing site plan. There is an existing rear deck on the second story and an existing detached two-car garage. The existing home is two stories, but it lacks upper floor side setbacks. So the first and second floor addition area is located in the rear as shown in the shaded area on the screen. The addition area will be connected to the existing detached garage and the front yard landscaping requirements and rear yard open space requirements will be met. There will be a new street tree planted in the front yard. Here is the proposed first floor plan. There will be a new family room, a new bathroom and existing crawl space area. The proposed second floor includes three bedrooms, two bathrooms, a powder room, kitchen, dining room and a living room. So the proposed residence is two stories. It's a ranch-style home with some contemporary style elements. The exterior home has stucco finish and the existing brick veneer and existing brick chimney will remain. The black-colored shingle roof will match existing and all of the windows will be white vinyl with a black trim color. Here's the proposed left side elevation. The existing upper story left side setback is not met. So the project is extending the existing non-conforming side setbacks, which will require a conditional use permit. And then same for the proposed right side elevation. The existing upper story side setback is also not met. So the proposed project is extending the existing non-conforming side setback, which will require the conditional use permit. So here's the proposed rear elevation. There will be a rear balcony on the second story. And the height is not changing, so it'll remain the same at 22 feet 9 inches. So the, as shown on the proposed left and right side elevations, the proposed addition is extending the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks on both sides, therefore requiring the conditional use permit. In order to meet the upper story side setback requirements, the proposed upper floor would need to have a minimum seven-foot side setback and a minimum four-foot side setback on the right. However, the existing home and neighborhood lack upper story side setbacks, so allowing the conditional use permit will be in keeping with and maintaining a similar design with the other properties in the neighborhood. So here's the proposed 3D rendering from the front left side view. And then the proposed 3D rendering from the left side rear view. A total of seven adjacent owner consultation forms were sent to the adjacent neighbors. All seven forms were returned in support of the project. So in order for the Planning Commission to approve the design review permit, they must make the following findings. Number one, the architectural landscaping and general appearance of the proposed building or structure and grounds are in keeping with the character of the neighborhood. Number two, the project complies with all applicable development regulations. Number three, the project will not cause significant visual impact to the neighboring views from principal rooms of a residence, unless it is proven by the applicant that there are no other viable or cost-effective alternatives. And number four, the proposal is not detrimental to the orderly, harmonious and safe development of the city and will not impair the desirability of investment or occupation in the neighborhood in which the building or structure is proposed to be erected. The conditional use permit findings must also be met. Number one, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort and general welfare of the persons residing or working in the neighborhood of such proposed use. And number two, the establishment, maintenance or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of the particular case, be detrimental to the property and improvement in the neighborhood of such proposed use. So staff recommends that the Planning Commission receive the presentation, review the project, consider the public testimony and approve a design review permit application to allow a 656 square foot rear second story addition and a 966 square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two-story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. So staff and the applicant are available for any questions.
Thank you, Jennifer. Any questions from the other, from the commission or staff? Okay.
I had no questions, but I had to go out there and really look at it. It's kind of a little different design, how they connected it. It's amazing that they did such a good job in doing that. And the crawl space is underneath the new part of the house?
So the existing house, if you're looking at it from the street view, it looks like a one-story house, but underneath that is existing crawl space. So some of that crawl space will be converted into livable space.
Okay.
Any other questions? Would the applicant or representatives of the applicant like to address the commission?
Just that I've been a longtime resident here at Millbrae, attended all Millbrae schools. You know, I really support, I mean, appreciate you guys if you could support me in this project because my mother-in-law is going to be coming in to live with us and we need the extra space. I bought the house with plans actually in the yard to actually to do a build and it just, it never happened because the previous owners never went through with it. So I just appreciate you guys' support. So thank you.
Thanks. Any questions? Comments? Are there any other public comments, slips or Zoom hands?
I do have one hand. Douglas Radke, would you like to unmute yourself, please?
Hello? Oh, no, I had my comment already addressed by someone else. It's okay. No comment.
Thank you.
Any further hands raised?
No further hands raised.
All right. Is there a motion to close the public comment?
So moved.
Can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Public comment is now closed.
Any further discussion from the commission?
It's a beautiful project. The CUP is totally reasonable and understandable. It's a lovely project, hoping it passes.
Commissioner Quigg?
No, I thought it was a nice project. I cannot believe there was a 10,000 square foot lot in the middle of Barbara, but I guess there was. Learn something all the time.
I think the only comment I would have is that this is, I believe, the second one of these that we've seen in the last year, where the second story is the main floor on the street level. And so in order to meet the, it's almost certain, it's almost impossible to meet the second story setback rule that's in our code. And then we, so then we have to use this conditional use permit for any reasonable extension of the house. So since we're in the process of updating our residential design standards, I think it would be good to address that in whatever update that comes to us. Is there any motion on the floor?
I'll move to approve the resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Millbrae, approving a design review permit application to allow a 656 square foot rear second story addition and a 966 square foot rear lower floor addition to an existing two-story residence and a conditional use permit application to extend the existing non-conforming upper story side setbacks in the single-family R1 zoning district at 627 Santa Barbara Avenue.
All right, the motion has been, the resolution's been moved and seconded. Can we do the vote?
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes 3-0.
All right, congratulations. Moving on to the next item of the public hearing for the 226 Castanada Drive. Public hearing on a design review permit application to allow the demolition of an existing 2,258 square foot single-story residence and the construction of a new 3,053 square foot single-story residence in the single-family residential R1 zoning district. Staff, do you have a presentation?
Yes. Good evening, Chair Chan and planning commissioners. I'm Nestor Gavara, Senior Planner, and I'll be making the presentation for the project at 226 Castanada Drive. As mentioned, the project is for a designer review permit and a tree removal permit, and it's for the demolition of an existing 2,200 square foot single-story residence and the construction of a new single-story residence. In terms of project location, it's in the Millsa State neighborhood. As this map on the screen shows, the red dot represents that project location. As way of a little bit of overview and background on the project, it's located in the R1 zone. It's an existing, or it's a 7600 square foot interior lot that currently contains a single-family, single-story, single-family residence, just over 2,200 square feet. The proposal is for a significant demolition of that existing single-story home and the construction of a new single-story home as well. This here is the existing site plan. And on the next slide here, we'll see the proposed site plan. The proposed development meets all development standards in terms of setbacks for the front, both sides and rear, as well as the front yard landscaping requirement and the rear open space requirement as well. This is the proposed floor plan. It includes four bedrooms, three bathrooms, one half bathroom, and then a kitchen, dining room and living room, along with a hobby or play area and an attached two-car garage. It also contains an outdoor deck in the rear as well. This here now is the proposed front elevation. The proposed home is a single-story residence and it does meet that the maximum height allowable in the R1 zone. This is the proposed rear elevation. The proposed left side elevation. And the proposed right side elevation. This graphic here just shows a better representation of the colors and materials that are being proposed for the home. It includes, it's mostly a stucco that's kind of charcoal gray, darker gray color. It also includes a wood use for both the garage door and the front door, as well as stone veneer for that entry in the columns there. In terms of roofing, it's asphalt shingles with a gable roof, with that Dutch gable roof over the garage that's present throughout the neighborhood. In terms of neighbor response, a total of six adjacent owner consultation forms were sent out. All six of these were returned in support of the project. In order for the commission to approve the designer review permit, the findings per section 10.05, 0.2500 must be made. Staff finds that these findings can be made by the commission as is detailed in attachment number one to the staff report. Along with the designer review permit, the applicant is also proposing to remove two significant trees as defined by our city code. These two trees are a Japanese privet and a Chinese elm. And these two trees are considered significant because of the trunk diameter is over 10 inches. And per our code, those trees would need to be replaced at the replacement ratio of in total, four 24-inch box trees with a minimum 1.5-inch caliper. This slide here shows kind of the landscape plan with the existing home and it shows the location of the two trees that are being proposed to be removed. The two excess represent those two trees. So the one in the front, the kind of bigger tree is the Chinese elm and the one in the rear is the Japanese privet. Per Millbrae Municipal Section 8.60, 0.110, these trees again must be replaced at a ratio of two to one. So each tree removed would require two trees to replace that tree being removed. And these trees must be a minimum of 24-inch box and a minimum caliber of 1.5 inches. Or alternatively, an in-lu fee can be paid to the city's tree replacement fund. The applicant is proposing to plant one 24-inch western red bud in the front yard, as well as one 15-gallon fig tree in the rear. In order to grant the tree removal permit, finding must be made per section 8.60, 0.110 of the municipal code. And as detailed in the staff report and in attachment number one, staff finds that finding number six can be made in this case. And finding number six reads, "The removal of the protective tree is necessary for a development project authorized by another permit approved by the city." For the city's tree removal ordinance, the applicant will be required to do one of the following or a combination of these. Number one, plant three additional 24-inch box trees on the property in addition to the already proposed 24-inch box western red bud. Number two, pay an in-lu fee, tree replacement fee. And number three, provide replacement trees in off-site locations with the approval of both the city and the underlying property owner. With that said, staff is recommending that the Planning Commission review the project, consider the public testimony and the findings as presented, and consider adopting the attached resolution, approving the design review permit and tree removal permit applications to allow the demolition of an existing 2,258 square foot single-story residence and the construction of a new 3,835 square foot single-story, single-story, the single-story residence in the single-family residential or R1 zoning district. Staff is available for any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you, Nestor.
Thank you. Very nice presentation. And we all received the attachment from the neighbor. Is it going to be read or just, are you going to comment?
Yeah, we did receive additional correspondence that was included. Later on in the website, we received it after the packet had gone out. It was questions from the neighbor at 220 Castanada.
Right.
Asking questions mostly about the construction phase. We didn't get in contact with the neighbor and did provide answers to a lot of those questions. Questions regarding the construction times, the time period that it would take, or the time period that they have to construct it per building code. And a couple of the other questions, I think the applicant will answer in terms of when are their, of their construction schedule.
But you did take care of it already.
We did, we did communicate with the, with the neighbor. Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Davis?
This is the most details I can recall on the tree replacement ordinance, so I'm glad to see those details right there. But I, my question is, let's say whether they are or not, I'd love to know when somebody pays into the replacement fund, when and where do trees get planted? Do they get planted in the same neighborhood?
I could respond to that. Commissioner, yeah, so the the fund will be used to plant trees somewhere in the city and that'll be at the city's discretion where it'll be planted. Some, there may be a program or certain areas in the neighborhood that would benefit for street trees or tree planting and we could use those funds for that. But to answer your question bluntly, it's up to the city. We don't know exactly what that is. There may be a programming and be up to the city council to determine where.
Okay.
And our Parks Department as well.
At some point, I would like to know when I can urge them to try and plant in the neighborhoods too. Because, you know, maybe there's a trail or a park where they could put the trees that are nearby. But if we just take down trees in neighborhoods and we put all of replacement trees in some limited concentrated areas, it's not quite the same as replacing the trees. So if they can get them closer, I'd be happy. But that's not the applicant's problem. If that's if they're paying into the in-lu fee, which they may not be, but there you go.
I'm sure we could work something.
I have a different question related to that in-lu fee. Have we collected any in-lu tree replacement money yet?
I do not believe so to this point.
Okay.
Is it fair in the ordinance? So yeah, I don't believe we have collected.
Any other questions?
Just a comment. It was quite a report on the trees. And they do have to be in order to remove them, like it sounds, that you really have to have a case for it, right?
Yeah, there are findings that have to be made. Yeah, there are findings that have to be made. And when you're building, in addition to the house, that's one of the findings that you know that it's not intended for just if you want to remove a tree, you can remove any type of tree. You'll have to meet one of the findings for approval. And so in this case, it was in conjunction with a designer review permit, which is a discretion of the planning commission, and it's a one-story house, so.
And it seemed like they had findings that they weren't perfect trees. So I would tend to.
Correct, the trees were in poor health as well.
Yeah. Is this been subjected to the new tree ordinance, or is this the ordinances that have been in effect here?
This is under the new tree ordinance that was passed.
Any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you, staff. Would the applicant like to speak on the project? No, okay. Does anyone have questions for the applicant? I actually did have a question, which was, have you, in terms of the options that were described, you know, planted additional three trees on the site, in-lu fee, some combination of those? Do you have an idea yet of what option you're going to pursue in this case? Yeah, whomever wants to answer, yeah. And please introduce yourself also.
Hi, my name is Ben Wong. I'm a friend of the owner, Wilson Chan and Debbie Lu. Yeah, from, at this point, I'm not sure if they are aware of the new fee. Do they know exactly how much to pay?
It's per code, it would be equal value to the trees being removed, and it's detailed in both the tree ordinance and one of the conditions of approval. I believe it's condition of approval number 33.
And at this point, I think I would just need to educate him as to how much it will cost versus, I think the chances is probably he wants to plant the tree more than just paying an in-lu fee.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Are there any public commenters, slips, or Zoom hands?
There are no public comment Zooms or hands.
Okay. Do we have a motion to close the public comment?
I so move.
Second.
All right, can we have a vote, please?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes three zero. Public comment is now closed.
All right. Any comments from the commissioners?
I'll go again. It is absolutely beautiful design, one of the prettiest ones I can recall. I can't wait to drive past the house in a few years when it's all done and see it, particularly the landscaping. If you do with that plan, the house is going to be absolutely stunning. And was there anything else? No, that's it.
I do have one, just something. When I was reading, I think they said yes, but they're going to put the fence at, from the 3237.
To the.
To the uphill side, and then.
A six-foot fence, I believe, yes, that's correct.
Yeah, and then it sounds like I read something that people on the downhill side want a fence too.
I believe it's on the, if you're looking at it from the street side, on the left, it would be 220 Castanada. And in their adjacent owner consultation form, they did mention some concerns regarding privacy, and the applicant did agree to build.
Both sides.
That's correct.
Okay. I'll make a motion.
Yeah, I think the only thing I would say is that, yeah, I think it's good to see the city's tree protection ordinance in action. You know, it is lamentable that, you know, trees have to be cut down for this project to succeed, but you know, it's good that there's mitigation, there's a plan for mitigation in place, so. Yeah, any motions?
I'll make the motion. Resolution of the planning commission, I approve, resolution of the planning commission of the City of Millbury approving a design review permit and tree removal permit to without definition demolition of an existing 2.25 square foot single-family residence and the construction of a new 3835 square foot single-story, single-family residence and the single-family residence R1 zoning district at 226 Castanada Drive.
Second.
The resolution's been moved and seconded. Can we do the vote?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes three zero.
The action of the planning commission is final pending a 10-day review period, sorry, appeal period. Any appeals must be submitted to the city clerk. I neglected that to mention, I apologize and neglected to mention that for the previous item also. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to the next item. Item 3C Alexandria Center for Life Sciences Parcel Map Review and Adoption of a Resolution Recommending the City Council Approve a Parcel Map for the Alexandria Campus for Life Sciences Project Located at 6 Rollins Road, 20 Rollins Road. There are a bunch of different addresses. This is an action item.
Thank you, Chair Chan and members of the planning commission, Rosco Motta Planning Manager. I'll be presenting this item to you this evening. And this item is a parcel map for the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences. Parcel maps are required when you're changing property lines. By virtue of background, on December 13, 2021, the planning commission approved entitlements for the life sciences campus. It consists of three buildings plus an amenity building, detached standalone garage, and also included reconfiguration of the parcel lines to accommodate the building and also to have them correspond with the individual buildings. In 2023, there's also a revision to the COAs which allow the filing of multiple parcel maps. Allows for the applicants to have more time to work on the parcel map for an additional portion of the property and while getting this done as soon as possible. So this here is a site plan and that was reviewed at the planning commission when it was approved. And you can see here, there's three different buildings, parking garage and the amenity building. The parcel that is being, the parcel map under consideration this evening is for the portion on the left side, if you will, building one and building three and building next side. So this shows the original lot lines prior to the entitlements. And then this is the reconfigured parcel lines. You can see there's going to be two parcels that correspond with buildings one and three, and then that'll separate the two. This portion of the site is being considered, and then the applicant's, in a future parcel maps, metal will come back for a final map for the other side of the project. So final maps are to convert tentative subdivision map from conceptual approval until final approval and to correspond to the property lines for the different buildings. It has been reviewed for chapter 10.15 subdivisions in the Millbury Municipal Code, and the city engineer has found that it meets all the provisions in that code, as well as the subdivision map act. In addition, improvement agreement is required for this project, and the improvement agreements details what public improvements the applicant is proposed to make and be required to do as part of the project. The project is almost complete, so most of the improvements are already done. The improvement agreement here is will detail the rest of the improvements that have yet to be completed. These public improvements include sewer, water line, sidewalks, curb, gutters, bike racks, street trees along the street frontages, Harriet Tubman Way, Rollins, and Adrian Road, and also includes security to ensure the completion of the remaining items and bond to cover any unperformed maintenance during the warranty period. And so staff recommends that the planning commission review and adopt a resolution recommending the city council approve a parcel map for the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences Project, 62030 Rollins Road, 231 Millbury Avenue, 230 Harriet Tubman Way, and 201 and 231 Adrian Road. Staff's available for any questions. I believe the city's consultant for large project, Harry Burrows, is also available for any questions they have. Thank you.
Thank you. Staff, questions from commissioners?
Do you have any completion date for them?
For this, I don't. It's soon. I don't have exact date. I'll have to double check, but.
Within the next couple of months?
Hopefully, probably, it's actually, we're, the city's doing inspections for the offsite improvements, so probably in the first quarter of next year, maybe. Don't hold me to that, but, yeah. But very exciting, and we're doing what we can to get it done as soon.
Any other questions? Any public comments coming in? Hands raised on Zoom?
No hands raised and no speaker slips.
Okay.
What was the public comment?
All right. Motion to close public comment. All right. It's been moved and seconded. Can we do the vote?
Commissioner Quigg? Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes three zero. Public comment is now closed.
Any further discussion from the commission?
Then it's a nice step in the right direction. And I'll make a motion. Approve the resolution of the planning commission of the City of Millbury recommending that the Millbury City Council approve the parcel map number 2024-02 for the Alexandria Center for Life Sciences Project located at 6 Rollins Road, 20 Rollins Road, 30 Rollins Road, 231 Millbury Avenue, 230 Harriet Tubman Way, 201 Adrian Road, 231 Adrian Road, and the APN numbers all listed in the resolution.
We have a motion. Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Can we do the vote?
Commissioner Quigg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Davis?
Yes.
Chair Chan?
Yes.
Thank you. Motion passes three zero.
All right. Yep, yet again, the action of the planning commission is considered final pending a 10-day appeal period. For anyone that wishes to appeal decision, please contact the city clerk at etran@ci.milbury.ca.us. All right, moving on in the agenda, new business. We have nothing listed, so moving on to agenda item number six, staff updates. Staff?
Just a couple of the same updates from last week. Just a reminder, commission committee user service recognition luncheon is November 6 at 11:30 a.m. at the Millbury Recreation Center. And if you haven't already, it's VP to Administration at ci.milbury.ca.us by November 1st. And then also, the, as I mentioned last week, planning commissioners' navigation center tour, if you're interested, is on Tuesday, October 29th from 5:30 to 6:30 p.m. Register if you're interested. And with respect to future planning commission meetings, we will be holding a planning commission meeting on November 4th, first Monday of November. We'll have two items. One is the master sign program for Alexandria, and then also a study session on the city's objective residential design standards. So the study session will go over what the city has done so far, what the city is planning to do with respect to this. And this is a good opportunity for the commissioners to give the consultant direction as to what things should be evaluated, what things should be approved in our design. We already heard upper story setbacks for existing homes that have no upper story setbacks that we should be allowed to continue without any conditional use permit. We have brought that up to them, so that's something that we'll be looking to incorporate in new code. So this is going to be a comprehensive update to the code in the design review permit process. And so, as you know, local jurisdictions are, have less and less discretion these days with respect to residential projects, and so many cities throughout the state are adopting an objective design standards. And so this is an opportunity to kind of shape how that product will look like. It is a study session, so there is, we won't be reviewing the actual standards yet. When we get the input from the planning commission, we'll also have a such session with the council and then use the information that, the feedback we receive from those two study sessions to formalize the standards and then, you know, bring it back to the planning commission and then city council.
Commissioner Quigg?
You had a couple of open sessions. Did you get very many people to come with ideas?
Yeah, we had a survey, an online survey, which had 77 responses, which was great, great turnout. And then we also had a public meeting workshop, public workshop, community workshop. And that one, we had about, I think it was around, yeah, 17 people from the public, not including city staff, that we got some good feedback from that as well. We'll have summaries of both the survey and the community workshop for you to see.
I thought you had done two community workshops, one?
Just one. And yeah, so let us know what you're seeing out there and say, hey, this is, probably we should improve this and, you know, don't do this, do this, you know, that would be very helpful for us. But yeah, this is a good opportunity to provide us with the direction and your help, so to be a great opportunity. So with that, I don't have any other updates. Thank you.
Any other comments on staff report? All right. Moving on, we have planning commissioner announcements. Any announcements from commissioners? I do want to, I do think this is the last planning commission meeting before the election, so I just want to encourage everyone to vote, especially in Millbury, we have a number of citywide ballot measures, so even if your district's not up, please make your way all the way to the end. And with that, we are at the end of the agenda, so I guess it's time to adjourn. Thank you. Good night.